For which it stands, one nation under our own individual liberty and justice for all.
What is your question with the consent? I do approve of the consent. Second, all my team. Any comments from anyone on the floor? Item number one, election chair.
I know Kathy stays as chair.
I will say.
Welcome Kathy.
I was just ready to move over to all of some paper. Item number two, land use in the urban development park. Derek, do you see? Is he able to discuss potential use of property located in the urban development park for brewing and sale and consumption of beer on site?
Take it away Derek.
Take it away. So was the town able to figure out that language for manufacturing or bottling beverages?
Yes, we did contact the town attorney.
Okay.
And she indicated that brewing would be included under light manufacturing.
Light manufacturing?
That's an allowed use.
Okay.
Any consumption of food and drink on site would be up to the interpretation of the planning board when there is an application for that purpose.
Okay.
And then if the planning board decides that it's not a permitted use, then we can pursue other avenues.
Okay. The first task with the planning board without a permit or anything like that, met some resistance, I guess I would say. We're gonna figure out where to go from there with that. The board really wasn't able to see a way that even brewery work without getting approval of the language and so forth. I guess the next thing I would say, one of the, so there's a couple of things that are troubling with the way the ordinance is written. Speaking with Jay Harris, he was part of the process when this was being done and then one of the land uses is approved for hotels, motels and inns. And that was designed at the time to be like a forum hotel with a bar and restaurant in it, even though that's not written in the plan or in the ordinance. So in my mind, does that work? When we look at that that way, we're looking, the ordinance calls out that a motel, hotel or inn works and they can have a bar or a restaurant. Now, I know the ordinances can never foresee everything that's gonna come at them. So if we look at this in a different light and say, okay, well breweries are acceptable. Breweries typically end up having some sort of eatery and so forth and then? Does that work? Does this language work? Does the board see it that way? Or is that just too far, you know, too far fetched?
Can you reference the ordinance number that you're referencing?
Uh, that is under, not great, I guess it's under E and it's number nine under E. Hotels, hotels and inns.
So on this one that you gave us, Christine, attached to our paperwork.
Yeah.
On page twenty-six, number eight. My interpretation of that is this is indoor places solely for eating and drinking as long as there's no dancing or live entertainment that's permitted.
No, not under E P T.
Is there any comments, he's already showing us, that's kind of in there. It's under B C, but not E P T. There was some discussion by the planning board if it wasn't for sole purpose, but an accessory, an accessory purpose. Like a hotel with a restaurant has an accessory purpose. So it, so that's an accessory service, Tricken has an accessory restaurant.
They're trying to attach it to them.
That's still an accessory restaurant, it's not the premise of the building. So I'm thinking that, does that follow that same consideration?
That's what I'm wondering as well.
Yeah, it's, yeah, similar.
It's a similar, it's a different zone, but it's a similar application?
Right. And the, yeah, the issue would be that it's the different zone in the way that we're interpreting the ordinance.
Derek?
I remember there was another discussion years ago in the audience, and it clearly was the intent at that point that would be a restaurant with these hotels, whatever they need, full service. With the restaurant included. Right? It may not be referenced that way in the, in the audience, but that was the intent. The discussions I heard back then.
I think one of the things that happened was probably when the ordinance was drawn up and the plans were made. Breweries with eateries were not a thing yet.
That's right.
And now they are a thing.
And but eateries was included for the original.
And the, and the recent.
Original discussion.
I would say brewery makes sense to have food.
Right, and that's kind of what the town attorney was.
Also, if we look at number five, if you look at that, twenty-sixth number five, catering is allowed in that mix in urban development. Um, so I'm not sure.
That's a good point. Let me catch up.
Um, perhaps you could ensure that you have a catering service attached to the restaurant.
It's a very simple workaround.
I mean, I look at that as catering. I mean, it's food, catering, takeout.
Again, I think we have to work together with the town and its people to find a way to encourage and promote their, what they promote.
Five percent.
Unfortunately, it may take us a little bit longer to get there and hopefully it won't, but I think we need to help promote, especially in industrial park.
So is this best head forward to an official application at this point?
Yeah, I, I think until we have an application, I got the sense from Sally that she really doesn't want to offer any more counsel.
Okay.
When there's, when there's an application, more questions can be asked and she can look at it more closely and work with the planning board and the town to see where we might be able to make this happen without an ordinance change. And that certainly would negate making an ordinance change in the future to make sure that we don't deal with the same issues again.
Sure.
But maybe we can make this happen prior to having to go through that process.
And I think, it says number five, catering or other similar uses. This uses to me is food.
Sure.
And I don't think it's a stretch to not.
Does the, does this board not see a way with the language that's in this ordinance? That brewery or eatery that does, that provide catering if need be? Does the board see that there's enough language in here to go before the planning board?
Well, so the attorney said that bottling was meant.
Bottling and brewing are.
Bottling, so that we already confirmed that the bottling and brewery meet that element. And I, I feel that number five, catering and similar use to me is a, is a food establishment. And there's no other way to determine that, the food is catering. And other similar use, I, that to me seems like it's other similar use. To me, that meets the criteria.
Language is also big enough, other use.
I think I, to me, that seems like it works.
Okay.
And I took Sally's response to, to be pretty open. That it makes sense to move forward.
Okay.
Go before the planning board and then take whatever other steps are necessary.
And is there a meeting on next Tuesday, Charlie?
There is.
Have you made application for that?
I've not made one, because I wanted to see where this would go today.
Have we put that in the paper yet?
Yeah, then it's a ten day deadline.
But I could go to the board if they're in public?
Yeah, yeah, you can always go to a public comment. Yeah, advertise would be for like a formal application.
And that would allow us to go over kind of what we talked about tonight?
Yeah, definitely.
Make sure the board is seeing the same line. If the board doesn't agree, what happens?
Doesn't agree.
If the planning board doesn't agree with what we're talking about right now, what's, what's my course?
Appeals board.
Appeals board.
Board of Appeals. But they appeal decisions on formal applications, so if you went just to get their opinion of it, the board can't, the board of appeals can't appeal the opinion. Does that make sense?
The board of selectmen can compel them to take up the application.
And we can certainly share the dialogue that we had tonight.
Yeah.
I will be there.
Okay. Do you think that's a solid plan? Should I go?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay, go before them again?
And if you had, you've got five days to complete it, not that your application is ready for review, but it wouldn't hurt to say you have your application ready for review.
And then as far as like, so I think if we move forward with the language that we have now and so forth, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. Boards pick both, boards are fine with that. But then I do definitely have interest in, you know, spelling this out, making this a little clearer. You know, there's, there's some, some mystery here as far as what was intended. And, you know, I love that people remember themselves. Mr. Harris remembers these things, but it's not a black and white, and so fast forward five years from now and someone's not here backing up, all of a sudden it's a harder, harder sell. I don't want, I don't want to keep proving myself, you know, to the board. Because I'd get frustrated at some point.
That timing is good as the audience that they're doing right now, so that's.
Right, right.
So, I mean, again, we really encourage you to attend a couple of those meetings because it's gonna help clarify where we want to go in the future.
Right.
Well, and if you have a vision on where you're looking to take the park.
Sure.
Um, that would be beneficial to understand perhaps what is missing here that should be evaluated.
Okay.
You know, we certainly want to foster new businesses as a community in a town. But you know what you're, where you're trying to take it.
What's the next meeting?
Uh, the fifteenth, but I don't believe Max is there then, he wasn't sure.
No, it's just to review the survey.
Yeah, so that would be immediately.
One to one activity now?
That's it, had to do with Max's schedule.
Do you want me to set up, set up time to come to that or could that be like?
We'll be posted on the website, the language, so please come.
Great, great.
If you know, you're leaving it gone, don't you let Christine know, because you could be on the so-called agenda.
Oh, okay, great. How much time do you need for that? And there, doesn't matter.
One day.
Okay. As soon as I see it on website, I'll move forward. So I think I'll do that, I guess after ten minutes conversation, I'll just kind of sit before the planning board and kind of talk about what we talked about this evening, point out some of the things that we talked about. If they, if they agree, I mean, that's, I mean, we've got enough going on to move forward and then it would probably work out. In my mind, it would probably work out, we wouldn't have to have a special town meeting if the, if the planning board had come to terms with what we, we're talking about tonight. We won't have to, I won't ask for a special town meeting. And we can just do it in June or.
But you should at least have, have us share where your vision is.
Sure.
Because that'll help as we review ordinance opportunities that we want, hopefully include those if they're pertinent to the town.
Right, yeah, I'd definitely be part of that, important meetings and stuff, I'd ought to be part of that for sure. Great, okay. Well, this has been very helpful, I think that's the primary reason why I'm here this evening, so thank you all.
We want to help you.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'm really doing, meet the law.
This is item number three, road commissions report.
Well, we're still going forward, paving, it's gonna be late next week or the week after for sure. I just got off the phone with them, so we'll be doing the Mount, uh, the Mountain Road, Hennessy and Rockweed. Other than that, some of the other stuff that we're trying to get done to do, we really can't find anybody to do them, whether that budget. Yeah, getting help, getting people to be able to find out how to do things is just impossible right now. I've tried three or four different contractors. They throw a price out there like, you know, foolish.
If they're getting urgent issues, you see that you can't get taken care of, it needs to be done before it's foreseen?
What's emergency?
What, what you consider an emergency, something that you don't think that can wait?
I, I, it's, it's still the bottom line is, within the, for, I did, the only thing that I thought that might be an emergency that I'd like to really push to get done this year with old rock, road, the ice building up on that corner of the bowl. Well, I would've got a couple last minutes, last minutes come in, twenty thousand dollars over. What we budgeted without the paving. So it was just like, I think that hope can hold off another year, but that way, all of a sudden, I think we can wait until people get so busy and the prices hopefully will come down some or we budget more money for these projects.
So we've had some erosion issues from recent storms. Um, I know there's one on Sabina Road. Some folks here are gonna talk about that, but there's also several potholes up on Holton Pond and there's a huge washed out gully that the guys took a look at last year. That there's a gap and deep, that some of them's off the road and it's probably gonna undermine the road.
Took a look at where we put stone in last year.
It's, it's past, that's a, I think, a part of Holton Pond. It's now, where you did it is fine, but now beneath it has washed out, so it just needs.
Scoot you out.
It's, I think the road's gonna, I mean, you could certainly, another storm might undermine the, the surface at this point. Um, and I know we've got some folks. Would you guys like to, Nelson's chat?
I'm on it. Okay. I've been talking with Steve, Suzanne, the situation and the administrator. Down on Sabina Road where I live, there's a road culvert. And right at the very end of that road culvert, there's nothing there, there's a lot of rush water coming out of that culvert. It goes down into the stream that goes between my property and Jerry Jamison's. Well, early in the summer, we had that five inch rainstorm. And the water come out of that culvert, it's a bad, it went over into the bank on Gary's side and it washed and undermined, that's a bad, that a great big tree, it roots small, started leaning and falling and we've got a bad windstorm. That probably would've gone over the road, so Jerry and I took it upon ourselves and paid off nine hundred bucks. He came down and took the tree down. After that, I got looking at the bank that I have, there's an eight foot drop in back of my shed. And that had ripped down through that stream, so that had dropped it down about two feet. So I got some, three yards of three inch rock. And I started mudding it down there bucket by bucket by myself, putting that stream bed. And that helped the erosion in the bed itself. But then about a month and a half ago, we had another rainstorm, it was seven inches and it did the same thing and a lot of it, it held, but it tore up a lot of it and I had to go back and redo it again. And I'm talking probably about fifty feet of stream bed that I got down over a bank bucket by bucket, put these rocks in. So now this past weekend, we just had another, what, six and a quarter inches? And thankfully, that road was being done down in what we call the swamp area. We got probably flooded, the worst I've ever seen it. I don't know, something down, damn cold, that stream flooded on that side of the park or something. But the water was way, way up on both sides of the road, way into the woods and I've never seen it down there in a few of the years I've been living down there. But eventually, that cleared out. But that's my problem. I showed Steve, he needs to see it. The administrator even went down and looked at it and I showed Suzanne. I've asked Steve if he could to get some of that, what they call, I guess, riffraff rock. Just to dump right there where the culvert is. And that hub saw that coming out of that culvert and hopefully prevented that from rushing down, but right now there's nothing to stop it. And it's just like opening up a fire, a fire hydrant and letting it rip down to the, the stream, nothing ended preventing it, saw it down. So I've asked Steve if he could get some rock down there, I talked to him two weeks ago. And he said he'd try to get a small truck over and back up, all he could do is dump it. So he didn't have to bring any excavator or nothing. He said he could dump it with a dump truck, not the air. And I told him, hey, if I had to move a few little rocks around, I'd do it down there, but I'd kind of like to have that done because we keep getting these rainstorms and if that bank that I've, that I've shored up over the years with rocks, like I said, it's about eight feet. If that should slide down into that stream bed, that's gonna block that area and I don't, I don't even gonna get that unplugged. So all I'm asking is if we could just get those rocks where that culvert is, hopefully that will prevent a lot of that from happening and slow it down. That's what I have.
Is that something we could address this year, this season?
We could address that, I told we could address it, I just didn't have the time to do it. I, I'm busy. We have, we know it's a lot, kind of West Bath municipal. You know, we just can't drop everything we're doing to go fix that stuff, we're in the same boat as these other guys are, we're super, super busy. I'm the road commissioner, I'm trying to get these guys to do it, but right now, we just can't get the help. And furthermore, on his culvert, that was an old brook that run down through there, waters run down through there for years, but he said it's an extremely rainfall. It's gonna wash it out.
But the big change was when the road was fixed, which we're grateful for, the road is much better. The water used to come across the road, when it, when it got ditched, all of that water comes through our stream. That was the change. He's right, it's been fine for years, but having the road be changed has made a tremendous difference on our property.
All we did was make the water run where it used to run years ago, down the side of the road.
Right, but now.
I mean, and not in the middle of the road, because we couldn't have that water running in the middle of the road, freeze and make it unsafe.
Well, I think we can say this last storm was unusual.
Well, we haven't free any of those storms this year.
But when you look up here on State Road, when it's flooded on top of a hill.
When it just was flooded, then there's a spray.
Right.
I'm definitely gonna get them, I've spoken, I told them, I'd get them a low down, I just ain't had that second to do it. I mean, yes, he's got a flood issue, everybody else, other jobs, I've had floods, there's just no help.
Do you have an estimate of the timeframe?
I've been asking for this for over three months now, a three month period, I mean.
Well, for one thing, I think personally being a representative of the town, I think we're fixing your problem, I don't really think it's a town problem. And it really hasn't been top of my priority. You're worried about a brook washing out behind your shed that is at least thirty, forty feet from our town road.
But it's that, it's that from the town culvert.
Can I ask you how much time it take you to put some rock in the back of the truck, bring it down and dump it? That's what you said all you had to do, you don't have to bring an excavator or nothing, you go load it in the back of a small dump truck, bring it down, back it up to where it's gonna go and dump it. How long does that take?
Well, I gotta drive the quickest to get the rock. And I gotta drive down there and dump it, and I just ain't had that time. I'm not retired, I'm not sitting home every day. I'm working my ass off every day, at least ten hours a day. Everybody else I talk to, promise me they'll go do the jobs. They don't get there, I gotta go do those ones too. I don't know where you've been or what's going on here, but if you haven't noticed what COVID has done to this country and done to these small businesses, it's way overbought. You have a problem?
Almost.
It's everywhere.
And I think, so I, we have to understand that Steve is the road commissioner, his job is to oversee, but he is not the public works department. And maybe what we're talking about long term is we need a public works department whose job it is to only work for the town, but that is not the case that we have right now. It's everybody, everybody has had flooding issues. I could say that the extreme storms have been running through my backyard because Hennessy Road was paved. Instead of being the dirt road that it was, now that water comes down more than it used to in my cellar, so. But I'm not gonna say that because the road is improved, my land is not improved, I mean, that doesn't make any sense. So we have to, we have to let people deal with the circumstances that we're dealing with, which is an unusually difficult labor season. Every, everybody in the trades is talking about how difficult it is to get help.
So it.
This has been an ongoing thing, it started probably roughly three months ago, that first five inch storm we had. My wife has emailed, not only the town administrator, she's emailed Steve about it, told people about the problem. Maybe next time, my neighbor and I would just say to Happy that, when there's a road with a tree that's gonna come down, we just let it drop in the goddamn road and hit somebody. We took it upon ourselves to fix that, because there's a problem there that could be easily fixed, but it's being ignored.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I just wanted to say to, to defend people. I tried to get a doctor's appointment for a very sick person, and they were denied and not accepting any patients unless they can prove they don't have COVID. We are just in different times where people just are, there's no help out there. I mean, Steve, is there anybody out there, is the town paid or do you know anybody that could jump on in anywhere?
Well.
So, well, let me, let me say before you, so we need to address the erosion on Holton Pond, which is a part of town road, which is gonna make it unsafe to, to travel on.
We need to do one again or something?
The gravel down that, where there, there's now that same water gully.
Yeah, okay.
But it's just further down, it's further down the road.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a couple of the culverts that were replaced there that also have some substantial potholes in them. When you get out there to address that, can you address the gravel?
Well, I definitely wouldn't, I buy them with loads, I will not do it.
But I'm trying to.
But somehow, that information needs to get to the town hall with Christine that there's an issue.
Oh, I've been aware of the issue.
Because.
Me and Christine would have, we'd have a look at the issue, okay?
I mean, the, the place she's talking about?
No, I know what she's talking about, we fixed part of it last year, I mean, it's.
But again, you're saying you're just hearing about it, so if we all know about it, then somehow.
Well, it's not only that, you know, there's only so much I can do. I, we, we do not have a municipal place, if we had a guy that had a truck and we had our own little guy that could go do this stuff, then he's a legitimate bitch. But right now, we don't, he's pitching at a guy that's been trying to get all these people to do these jobs.
Still have a problem on the process, not the internal, which is the information needs to go to town hall.
So we, so.
And yes, they have the information and seen it, I've talked.
But not this one.
Not this one.
So what I'm saying is that information needs to get funneled to, or to afford to be addressed.
Last thing, there's a puddle that we need to get taken care of down there, we're just gonna get some stuff forwarded and go patch it, all the puddles we get.
So we have, we have two, I believe, two applications for road committee members?
Um, I think we have three.
Three, so we have enough for a committee?
What's that, what's that gonna do as a good project?
So, oh, let me, hold on, so it, instead of, I only travel, travel certain roads if I can see and observe. I don't travel all the twenty-seven miles in West Bath. But if we have people as a road committee go around and say, hey, there's a washout here. Instead of, instead of making sure everything comes to town, we now have a committee that's gonna help to say, here's the twenty-seven miles of roads in West Bath. Here's the ones that need emergent repair, here's the ones that we can start, we've talked about trying to get a ten year schedule on a rotational basis, so we can say here, every ten years, this road's gonna be addressed and this road. And we can then manage it on a schedule, and it's no longer a fire drill, and then it'll also help if something happens out of the blue or we have another very wet season and there's washouts or things that we need to take a look at. Or if there was a beaver dam at the new Sabina Culvert, uh, down in the woods. It'll be brought to attention because other people are gonna be out driving the roads, all of them, and, and making sure that the town has a plan on how to handle the whole community. That I think will help.
I, I think, I think a road committee, which I suggested probably five years ago, is a great idea. But we have people every day driving probably every inch of the roads in West Bath. And, and if there's a problem, all of us need to be responsible for calling the town hall and saying, hey, I'm noticing this. We can tell when things are looking worse than they did the last time. We're all responsible for the upkeep of our own town. And we all have to be patient with each other in times like this, when nobody has enough people to do the work that needs to be done. Everybody's in the same position. And we are, yes, we are at risk, but we're all at risk in some way or another because of it. And instead of being crowdy to each other, we need to be patient and understand that Steve has been working his proverbial buns off for this town for years. And more, he gets probably more complaints than thanks. But he's done a really good job for us nine times out of ten. And I've been happy to tell him when I think he wasn't doing a good job. But that's not most of the time. He's up against it, people.
Well, I think, I think having a, an official committee in place will help expedite certain elements of it and, and certainly bring it to light. I think it's, it's certainly not going to hurt the town to have
I agree. There'll be more people that townspeople can go to complain to besides just Steve as well.
My phone rings off the whole. People don't realize how many times I've run it out and checked on just when people call me personally. And then I get call me, phone calls, whatever.
I'm sure you've had at least twenty calls from this last storm. I haven't been done.
We have three pages of jobs that need to be done right now, and I'm booking into next August. And when a town's person has an issue, like the particular one that we're talking about, it gets like a highlight next to it, which means it may be down here, but it's important, so it will be done as soon as there's time to do it, you know?
But it's just, if we can just coordinate, I mean, coordinating, if you have to do Holy Pond, if you can help coordinate efforts, you're not
No, I, I agree a hundred percent.
You know, just trying to, I'm trying to help facilitate that element of it. And if there's anything, you know, and I think once we get the, it'd be nice to have the road committee out there. You know, they can all do a drive-by and, and see how it looks, and I think they may look at it differently than someone who's just driving out, you know, heading out to work. They may not see a washout. They're not paying attention to that piece of the road or something where I think a road committee is going to be
Well, the last four or five years, I've been able to spoil the town because I haven't had this big job we took on for American Steel. Now, this job is multiplied by three times what it's supposed to be. And there's just no help to get to do it. So it's, you know, I'm getting there to the wrap-up part of it now where I can sneak away on a small job and go fix something small like that. My hat's always been dedicated right over there, and then at night, I go and check out stuff I suppose for the town and do a few odd jobs. It's just been crazy. I've called J.R. Hills. I've called Jeremy Worf, and all these guys are busy too, you know? I don't even want to listen, you know?
Just trying to get it, you know, what we can address before the snow flies.
But, and I'm definitely get, just like, I mean, Trump is right in the same boat, and I
No, I get it. I'm just trying to see how he's
I beg him to get down there and do these roads because I thought, you know, because people are expecting it. We don't do that, then they're just going to come back and complain to me and... So I told him I'd give him a hand and do traffic control and stuff like that so we could get it done. But like I say, I am wrapping up over there, so if somebody did have a small emergency, maybe get down, I could be more on it. But people are going to realize that the town does not have a municipal person when they call, that it's just going to go get fixed like that.
Hopefully, hopefully, we'll be able to help prioritize what happens.
Well, no, I, I do agree with that too. I think that for years, we have had road commissioners that have worked outside their scope of, of work and done a lot for this town for nothing.
Right.
And now we're in a position where we may need to pay or hire a real road commissioner that dedicates the majority of their time to this town. So in the future, we may need to look at a full-fledged, another town employee.
I think it's a good idea because it's issues like this that inform our future. And, you know, one guy with a truck and a cover sander and a little bit of equipment can do a lot for the town.
Even if a guy had a one-ton and a shovel and stuff with a snow blower on it, they could be flying to school, the town hall. They could run down and fix a culvert like him, dump a load of stone in it, clean out culverts, clean out brooks and stuff. Just one guy could do all that for town and
And that's what we may need to look at.
Mr. Nelson, do you have a comment?
I'm not here to pick on you, Steve, but this is the situation that, like I said, has been going on now with three big rains of rainstorms. I'm sixty-seven years old, three yards of three-inch crushed rock. You know what that is? And I've loved that bucket by bucket myself all the way down. And each time we get a big rainstorm, I gotta go down and I gotta put more in. And all I'm asking, and I don't think it's too much to ask, but just, just that little bit dump, right where he said he could do it, and he didn't need an excavator, just a dump truck, back it up and let it go. That's all I'm asking for. I don't really think that's too much, and
Yes, you're not asking too much. It's just that it's the time we're getting it done.
Well, I understand, but I mean, this has been like, since probably the first of September of, of August till now. I mean, winter's coming. I don't want to be down in the middle of January trying to do anything.
And yes, it affects our tree, but had that tree come down in the road and killed somebody, that tree was within the length of what the town tells us they have to raise moving things within, and there were other trees in that area that could come down. The whole banking is undermined. He's dealing with everything down past the end of the culvert. We're worried about somebody getting killed.
Now Suzanne's seen it. You've seen it. The administrator's seen it. I invite the two of you just to come down and look at it. See for yourself what I'm trying to explain.
We've spent our whole lives doing what needs to be done ourselves. We need help with this particular part because we can't physically do what needs to be done. That's all we're asking.
And what I'm hearing is that when that can be done, it will be done. But we can't ask people to do more than what they can do. We really can't. And one of the things that the town needs to take a look at, and we haven't sufficiently, is what is happening within our road beds and in our other kinds of infrastructure because we are dealing with climate change. It is real. It is happening, and these storms are the result of it. And we haven't sufficiently taken the time in the past to deal with it. And everybody's culvert is going to be vulnerable when we have these kinds of storms. It's just science.
Well, climate change to me is a bunch of bullshit because over to the U.N., Russia and China, and also Saudi Arabia didn't even bother to show up. The United Nations has given China a ten-year pass where they don't have to have anything whatsoever to do with climate, but yet the rest of the world is supposed to go on their knees for them.
I don't think that that is relevant here. What we are dealing
You mentioned climate change. It's relevant to me.
What we are dealing with is the result of what has happened. Who's responsible in the, in the universe for this is not relevant. What's relevant is what's happening in our own backyards and how we can adapt to our current situation. And we clearly need to make some plans for that. We do.
When you have time, Steve, we would appreciate you
I will pay this stuff for cross-storm flies.
Thank you very much.
And just, just to clarify, Steve has approached to convene in the last year or so about the budget committee in the town looking at the possibility of hiring even a part-time public works employee who would be under the road commissioner's direction, but could do a lot of the small jobs in town. But that's going to come at a price.
But I don't think that price should be as high as it is.
No, no, I'm just
A, a, outfit to go, you know, we've got some prices for people just cleaning up trees out of the roads that pay a week's salary.
No, I'm referring to, it's not just about hiring a person. We're going to buy a truck, equipment. In case they do the lawns, a lawnmower, you know, it's not going to come just cheap. We're going to, but as you say, it's cheap cheaper than not paying somebody three times what the jobs work.
Right.
Of the time when the town was bad.
And Steve has approaches about discussing this, and it's on our, this year's, next, next year's topic is what do we do about this? Because he is not a town employee as far as public works. He's not. He's a private contractor. He also is a road commissioner, but he's not supposed to do all the work himself. He can hire it out, and now he can't.
Agreed.
Thank you for considering it.
And hopefully
Thank you for coming. We do appreciate it.
Hopefully, we'll have a, a committee that can help with what you need in a meantime.
You're welcome to come by one time and go to the quickest way yourself if you'd like.
Either standard or automatic?
Automatic.
Oh. Let me know when it comes. I'll do it. I didn't remember going dump truck before. You trust me.
It's a small truck. All right, well, either one, either one of you guys want to go?
Those sneakers, you can do anything.
It's a lot of fun.
All the white sneakers match my shirt.
I like
Like getting one from your asshole.
Business item number four, fire truck.
Three bids.
Three bids.
Fire truck.
One for each of you. To open and read aloud.
That's three more than last time.
I think this was, uh...
Ten dollars.
I would say seventy-two fifty, seven thousand two hundred fifty. I'm glad you guessed.
We're going to head out. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I apologize for the delay, folks, and I will definitely be down there with some thoughts.
Wait, with the ones, go first.
I guess that's you. Am I right?
I think I did mine out.
No, I understand that.
I hope homes are moved ahead like an empty bucket. I do.
Okay. I have a bid from the Asian Auto Services of Plasto, New Hampshire for the nineteen ninety-six Central States Pumper at five thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents.
That's an interesting figure.
I have a bid from Nicos Excavation for fifty-one oh one.
And I have a bid from Steven C. Reno for eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Gee, which one do you take?
I move that we accept the bid from Mr. Reno for eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand five hundred.
I don't know. I like the little bit.
I have to agree with you right here.
It's our fiduciary responsibility to have, to generate as much revenue as possible.
He's going to let you drive it home.
It's not that. I always love the dream.
You can take the side of it on too. How's that?
Can we all take turns?
The great kids will love it.
You have to come to Navid. They probably will sit in their campground. The kids are playing hard. And I basically wanted it because the
Was there a second on the motion to add?
Oh, really?
Yes, Suzanne seconded it.
Okay. That truck was dedicated to my grandfather.
That's so cool that you got it then. That holds sentimental value.
Yeah.
Right on.
Okay.
All in favor?
We have, we have.
We had a second. All in favor.
So we can tie it on? That's a good truck.
Business item number five, committee appointments. Sandra Baskov submitted application to serve on the county municipal plan committee.
I move that we approve the appointment of Sandra Baskov to the county municipal plan committee for the town of West Bath, effective immediately.
Second.
All in favor?
You guys can talk louder for a second.
So we have, you think, three road committee people?
Um, yes. Let me find the applications.
Are we going to do those now as well or not?
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you. I don't know if you're prepared to take that up tonight or if you want to do anything next meeting.
Or rather, it be put on the agenda like anything else.
Okay. Um, yes, we have three, and, um, I just want to mention that we don't have an application from John Reno. I know he expressed interest at one point. Um, I don't know if somebody wants to reach out to him. Because no committee appoints without a bill of force.
So that makes sense to wait till the next meeting and that.
Yeah.
Town administrators report.
I don't have anything to report tonight.
Her agenda is like, phew.
Could, um, future agenda items?
We do have a future agenda item. On November eighteenth, um, I sent out notice to the abutters for Norwich Solar's proposed project. Um, I have heard back from a few property owners who are planning on attending the meeting. And I also reached out to Norwich Solar to see if they would send a representative. Probably also makes sense to have somebody from the planning board there.
Just wait a minute.
Planning board member at the meeting to field questions about land use rezoning. So, um...
So that's required for rezoning there?
Right. They want to expand the urban development part. So
This is Norwich requesting this?
Yes.
Where's this? Is this in the butter? At the bar?
Kinda.
It's kinda, but not
Oh, okay.
Exactly.
It's park adjacent.
Yeah.
However
It's a little area.
A land use rezoning requires a meeting.
Yep.
That's why I was pointing.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Then we
So get it together.
Should we jump in on that and do it to full?
If we're going to do it, you might as well do it all.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Right?
So, the plan is to have enough people in the room to answer the questions that come up during that meeting. Because I think people are looking at it from different angles. There are property owners who are concerned that they're going to not be able to maintain a residence in an urban development zone. There are people who are for the project. There are people who don't have an objection to expanding the zone depending on the access to the solar project. So there's all kinds of concerns
That should all be heard.
That will come up and need to be addressed.
The reason I asked Steve to stay for a minute was, um, where we, in our coming up, we have to negotiate or find a different trash company. I have a couple of concerns. The amount of traffic on the Anthovino Road, and I was kind of wondering about your input in that. And the other thing is that noise is still not stopped. When I go to work at three fifteen in the morning, trucks are pulling out of there like crazy.
Can we ask them to come back in?
We can, if you want to take that path.
Well, it's
I'm not sure if we're very productive in the past. I think we need different people in the room.
We want people that can make a decision
Exactly.
And answer the questions that we've posed numerous times for them before, like it takes a gentleman and Sally Day.
So, just a question. Do you, do you know, is that all waste management or is that?
Are there other refuse companies in there that are
There is a lot of other trash companies coming in there and using it for a dump station. And then they get shipped up to Baguio from there. So I've seen people from Booth Bay, West Cassett, all those trash trucks coming in there and up in there.
And, but we have it hours of operation, do we not?
It's in the contract, yes.
So why are people in there at three fifteen?
They shouldn't.
Cabela. Is it Cabela?
No.
Cella.
Cella is in there constantly. It's always waste management.
Well, they, they
Well, the seller's management does not believe that they have trucks operating that early.
So there should be bylaws, you know, like the city of Bath.
There's a contract. They have a contract with this, with time elements that they're not supposed to be
We just made up, we need to push it?
So with the contract, I'm just wondering, in the future, probably years off, is that a thing that needs to be allowed facility? I mean, do we need to gate at the end of the road? It's only open during operating hours?
Well, that's, since Cella is managing that facility.
They're not managing it, though.
But I mean, it's their responsibility. It's not a town facility. So it's something that you could probably put in there for contract language if you wanted to, but otherwise, we wouldn't have any control.
The contract calls for certain hours of operation. They are not, they're breaking the contract at this point.
Correct. I think everybody recognizes that.
So we need to get a written warning?
Well, their contract is up.
In a year.
In a year. So we were wondering
I don't think we need to wait that long.
Other, see if there's any other potential people that would want to bid on it.
Well, plus, we, we just started bringing in Brunswick, so not only are they abusing the hours, but we have more traffic from other towns using it.
Well, I thought that, I was always told that the Well, I thought that, I was always told that the town gets so much per pound, it goes across scales. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's true.
So...
Presuming that they're collecting it.
Uh, right, so...
Because they, I know there's an issue, the guy said, we might take in cash. He's not sure he's even getting it.
I know, you see, these five or six full tractor trailers leaving out of there, dead going to Baguio. And they hold a hundred thousand pounds per truck. So I think there's about ten, ten to twenty times more trash going through there than the town was...
And we're getting KIA.
Even knows about.
Yep.
Well, you've gotta start someplace. You should start talking to those people. And that's, you know, you just can't wave the buck's weight out.
Can you, can you bring them in in the next meeting?
I can bring them in, but I do not want the same players in the room, and to go over the same. I want...
I'm giving if you are to video at three fifteen in the morning. I'll be a witness with you.
I want management in the room.
Right.
Well, I've also noticed that...
Seriously?
They have big trucks that go in there that haul the freight from there. And I've gone up there during snowstorms, and they're up there running that two o'clock in the morning. They have trucks up there sitting away for their load that's hauling, you know, truck drivers. And some of them being parked, their rigs up there. And I've even seen them leaving, running all night in the winter months.
It's not that, it's when they start banging something. I don't want to bang in the town days or something.
They're gonna be emptying something.
Just wake me out of a dense...
Derek, you're nodding.
No, no, I don't, I haven't heard it. I've heard banging in the morning, but not, not at three o'clock in the morning. I'm not sure, I'm just stating it all in. It sounds like it's, it's a real problem.
I'll, I'll...
Well, the she's here, and it was, was on this side, see, or can't be other people?
Oh, yeah, who was it? I think it was, I can't think of the name.
Yeah, he was complaining really bad.
Running to they go?
Snow savage and things.
Yep, and you got, well, so that's what you wanna do, is go see those neighbors and see what they write for a statement, or see if they'll write a statement of the noise, of the bother, whatever. Get all those statements together, read them, and go from there.
You're on me?
If I was renegotiating, uh, getting another trash company in here, there's nobody any bigger than Cabella and Waste Management, um, to be able to handle what they do and have avoid through the...
But they need to stick to the contract language. This is not free for all in West Bath. And, and we're not collecting our fees.
No.
So, this is, this is not, it's not some sweet little town, they're gonna just brush that under the carpet and ignore the language of the contract or the fees they owe us.
So, the other ways, and the, I don't believe they pay in the fees, so I don't know of any other companies that could come in there and recycle and do what they're doing to get what we're getting out of these guys. So we gotta kind of play with them, some.
If they can follow the rules.
Right.
I'm not saying that, but it's against...
If they can't follow the rules, and there's no one to take their place, we can't...
Well, we can look into it.
I know it's despite our fans either.
Well, that's, that's just true. I don't know, I could do some research for you, but I don't know anybody that could take their place and do what they're doing.
Yeah, but, but if, if we're only getting ten or twenty percent of our appropriate fees...
You don't know that.
Right.
You don't know that.
Only way you can go is for somebody that...
Please don't say that you don't know it.
You'd have to put somebody in the scale house and see what goes through there, in my...
I, I think your best bet is let Christine fall up with somebody else in the company and, and not just go with no direction.
Yeah, because I think those two people that come here really have really been up there or really see what's going on.
Well, I'm saying that's why Christine sees you can find somebody else in the company to come talk to you. They also know the contract is up this year. They aren't stupid.
You think they'd be trying to follow the rules more, though?
No. What I'm saying is now is...
They don't know what's happening.
Now is to kind of talk to them.
Right.
And try to work with them and start again, but the contract's up.
Do we still have a camera up there? It's just on the salt shed, right?
Right, we don't have a camera that would, they could take that up now.
But you're messing with probably one of the biggest outfits in...
They make cement shoes.
And then you've got, you've messed with too much with, so you wanna make sure you got everything together and...
I just won't sleep till at least five.
And they know that contract's up.
So...
So where are their headquarters? Because I know they have a listed location.
I don't know. They, they have them all the way down to Jersey.
They have it so much like Scarborough.
And there's New Hampshire?
I wanna say their headquarters are in Vermont, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Those, one of the two places that's probably used a bit.
Um, you need to be careful about slander and libel. Okay. Business?
I wish I could tell you more, but that's...
No, that, that, that's good.
Hey, you have the road to miss quite enough out.
Well, I know, but he probably goes up to the salt shed, he's probably seen something that...
Well, I see a lot, you know, they have, they got quite a business going out of there, yes.
Well, he, he told us they weren't collecting the fees, and he, and he was worried about the, that's why he wanted to go to the coupon at the town that we bought.
He didn't say he wasn't collecting the fees. He said he wasn't sure.
He was collecting, he wasn't sure he was sucking off his cash.
He didn't want to be doing, dealing with cash, because cash is problematic. He didn't make any accusations about his employees. He just noted that receiving cash is problematic, and it is.
And that's an issue at every transfer facility.
And I see on the news this morning where they're trying to promote all businesses to get away from cash.
It's time for not the whole country.
Yeah, they don't really wanna do cash anymore.
They're gonna take that call and be...
But you think we could do worse with them, and this is the perfect time to do it. So our suggestion, let Christine see what she can find out, and just go slow.
How about like some type of road camera or something like that, just to prove if they are in there at three fifteen, then you can go, when they come in, you can, you can point out. Three days a week, you're in there at two o'clock in the morning, three fifteen, five o'clock, and instead of...
I'm thinking about, I'm thinking of the service department.
Well, it's kind of like I go to work at four in the morning, and they're pulling out as I'm going by.
But if you have a video, it's pretty compelling. It's pretty hard to deny that something's going on. Yeah.
So, I have your, your attorney write up, well, on the new contract, have this stuff written in there, perfect language, you know, no mistakes.
Well, you can't get everything, but if you can at least get operating times, right?
Exactly. And noise time.
Yeah.
I mean, like city of Baguio, when I work in there, I cannot stop before seven o'clock.
And I think the other thing that might be helpful is when we are presenting our case, that this is happening. If people in the neighborhood who are being awakened would just simply roll over, keep a notepad by the side of the bed, and write Tuesday, whatever, three thirty, I heard a big clunk.
The other thing is, when we come up with some ordinances for this town, it will be a, usually four, so if they have the same thing as now.
I've had, I've had heard of other businesses having the same issue of noise aside, and they have made them put up fences to control it, if it is at, at a certain level. Because you can actually do enough investigation to know what the noise level is and all that, so...
We're just growing and becoming more industrious, so we need to have...
We're certainly on.
Yeah.
Christine, could you pull, um, our revenues from now over the past twelve months?
I can.
Sure. I'm curious to see what, you know, and presumably with Brunswick and other towns bringing their refuse there, that we should have a higher tipping receivable from that?
Thank you, Steve. I didn't mean to call you in. I just...
No, no, I just, I didn't know anything about the contract exactly, but it's... Like I say, you just wanna be, try to make sure your stuff's together when you start this company out there.
Yep.
It must be necessary.
We're in maintenance and supplemental.
No, pardon me. It's not, you can... I'm sorry. I'm concerned about our trash. Yeah. Yes.
Christine, while they're talking, just, I see there's this white flag thing that you... It's not on here?
No, it's just correspondence.
Are they, are they asking for money?
Yeah, I know, like, so...
Okay, okay. This would be something that we would ask them to come and talk to the budget advisor or something.
Madam, you got elected as mayor?
Um, well, nobody...
Something right here.
Nobody elected me, apparently. Brad appointed me. Um, can you say something about what this is all about? I know it's addressed to me, but...
Self-coverage mapping?
Self-coverage mapping does seem like a good idea, but they didn't tell me what, they didn't tell me what they're gonna charge us for, I think, or...
Oh, I don't know that they're going to charge us. They just wanted to let us know in case residents were wondering why people were in the area.
Oh, so it's something they do anyway?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I finally got to the finer. Self-coverage mapping is a free website.
Oh.
And it'll be good to know where we have...
Right, where consumers...
Where we have dead spots?
Yeah.
Well, this is actually important.
That's why you're there.
What a surprise. Self-coverage mapping is a free website where consumers can go and register wireless dead zones that impact them, whether it is at a work, home, or baseball field. So to register a specific area in Cumberland County, and I would think Saginaw would be also the same, they weren't quite clear, um, we can pin a location on the CCM map, designate a wireless service issue. So I think that's something that could be helpful.
And I also think, hopefully, Light Flight will come see you. I think that's a relatively cheap fee.
They don't see us. They see the town.
Right.
For, for a petition.
But we need to have them sign a petition.
Okay.
That's the town.
Because that's really inexpensive for that service.
Yeah.
What is it? It's fifty cents per capita. That, that, it's nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Are you assigning them with the process?
Yes. So, so, did she just ask if we're, if we're gonna inform them with process? Okay.
Yes, I take care of that.
Okay.
Carly has enough to do.
Yes, indeed. That's really inexpensive. In my time here as an EMT, um, it's really saved lives.
It said six residents in the past two years. That seems... Certainly enough to, one percentate that.
I got two, I'm sorry, I'm on crack again. The assessors... Various abatements and supplementals. So...
That's one we're starting with.
Yeah, I think so.
You don't have a copy of that, do you, Christine?
Um, I don't. I have the ones that they're gonna sign.
I got, the first one I had is CIT Tech Financing Services.
That's in a month?
Looks like, uh, twenty twenty fifty-two fifty and twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fifty, for a total of ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, I have to figure it out, obviously. Sankey Finance, they, they do have another account in town. And that's, that's still valid. Uh, I like it when these companies call and complain, but they don't send me any notification of anything that they, you know, get rid of.
Do we have these policies on notifications?
No, they send, we send, we send documentation out every year.
I'm just wondering if there could be a policy if they don't send documentation...
By a particular time, and they're responsible for it?
There is a policy.
There is.
For that, I got, got one already. And because, please, if you go with the commitment, it's too late. But that's one that's, like I say, it's two years.
So you're recommending that we approve this?
Yeah, give it up, books.
I move that we approve this, as recommended, that we abate, where's my, where's my, um... Where's my lock number?
It's a, it's not a lot.
It's all account number.
Yeah, account number.
That we abate account number P slash zero zero eight for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, as recommended by our assessing agent.
For ninety-five dollars?
For ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, if you just go ahead and sign your copies, Madam, I can give you some cards.
Okay.
I believe it, yes. It's fifty-two fifty for twenty twenty and forty-two fifty for twenty twenty-one, for a total of nine hundred dollars. Second, all in favor? All in favor?
Senator Spock Incorporated?
No.
And that is... Personal property evaluation, abatement request here is fifty-six oh seven. I move approval of abatement of fifty-six oh seven for account P two five three for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Second, all in favor? I don't have it. And then there's like, I don't have an abatement for Todd and Pam Underwood. The amount of one oh seven fifty-two, the acreage has been wrong for a while, so I have to pay a call. Ron did the research and found out that one point six acres was sold a few years back.
You can expect people to be successful, obviously, if they're house on us, uh, one point six. Can't forget the guy saying five million.
So this parcel was sold with a house?
Yeah, it was sold, and apparently, you know, the, the tax method kept up with it, whatever. It sold quite a lot of it, obviously, but kept on building that, and doesn't quite see it. But it's been changing a beautiful thing.
Did you all sign that abatement clause secondly?
It's the...
It's coming, so everyone can rest on their papers. So, let's see.
So this is the parcel that's transferred, that's billing, and never transferred off the mountains.
Right.
So I move that we approve the abatement for a hundred and seven dollars and fifty-two cents for Todd and Pam Underwood.
Second, all in favor?
There is a man. Done three supplementals this year. It was, like I say, there was one come in after commitment to like, um, I'm not explaining, it was the end of... Lots of, it was commitment. Sorry, and this weekend, really, day. I said, if you sent me the information, we'd get it, and then, can we send it to you now? And they said, no. And there's two other people, it was real small amounts, then I told them, it was one hour, five fifty hours. I was correcting the computer and... So otherwise, it's been pretty good.
As I say, Ron, this year seems to be much better than previous years.
It does. I think check, double check, uh, you know, with Julie and myself checking where we had problems before.
Pretty tough.
Still, you know, still with two computer software, don't really like each other. And the codes, it's always the codes that show up and mess things up. I guess that's all I have.
Do we need to go into executive session?
We do.
I just wanna mention one more thing before, so I just got a message from Norwich Solar, and they are planning on attending the meeting on the evening. So they'll have a representative here.
Then I move that we move into executive session pursuant to one MRS four oh five six A to discuss a personnel matter. Should we do public comment first, or after public comment?
I can see her outside. Give me one second. Carly, I'll sign this.
Well, I need a second from Adam's motion.
Second.
Christine can take that.
All in favor? Aaron, good.
Okay.
Great turnout for the election, Paul.
Great turnout.
Yeah, that's good.